I'll call this meeting of independent schools. District 544 to order. And the first item of business then is to assign a chair.
Ms. Huries?
Present.
Ali Kuntz.
Here.
Steve Vigasoff.
Here.
Matt LeFaut.
Here.
Wayne Davis is here.
Nicole.
Here. Very well, thank you much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Ooh.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? I'll note there are a few different items on there from our email. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye. The agenda is approved. Going to acknowledge and send a sincere thank you to the 544 Education Foundation, who awarded over $63,600 in grants to the Fergus Falls School District. They were able to completely fund 18 requests, along with two requests receiving partial funding. So that is just a wonderful boost to the district, and we thank them very much. We also want to thank Otter Tail Power Company for their Adams School geothermal rebate of $125,280. Yeah, it was a big leap for ICE acknowledgements. We will move on for reports and begin with our elementary principal reporting. Scott Kolbeck, Principal for Adams and McKinley.
Good evening, everybody. It was good to get back to school today after our nice end week break, our four-day weekend. You know, sometimes it's not so easy for those little five-year-olds after a four-day weekend to come back to school. So a couple of them were struggling this morning, but we got them going and we got them where they needed to be, and an hour or two in a day, they were just fine. You've probably heard of the Food Backpack Program. This is one of the many programs through the United Way of Otter Tail County. But at McKinley School, on the last day of the week, so last week would have been Wednesday, usually it's a Friday, we are putting 78 bags of food in 78 school bags in 78 lockers of 78 students at McKinley. And that's quite an effort, it's quite a number, and it takes a number of us to walk down the hallways with that cart and just open up these lockers and put that non-perishable, many non-perishable food items in that bag into those school bags. So we have some little kids carrying a pretty heavy school bag home with them on a Wednesday or a Friday. So just wanted to thank the United Way of Otter Tail County for helping us with that program. You've maybe heard me talk about our Minnesota Reading Corps literacy tutors that we've had in our buildings over the years. We had one literacy tutor start with us today after she attended training. It's called Institute. She attended a three-and-a-half-day training last week. Mr. Mike Epplebold and I interview and meet these people, and we had three of them ready to go, one for Adams and two for McKinley. But then we found out last week that only one of the three made the training in the cities. So we have one, and we're going to continue to look for others. In fact, I was on the phone today, reaching out to somebody that I'd heard maybe had an interest. So our Minnesota Reading Corps literacy tutors, they are not employees of our school district, they're employees of Minnesota Reading Corps, but we use them as interventionists. They can work with 15 or 16 kids per day for 20 minutes a day, and then they cycle kids in and out of their program. They're identified who could use this service, and then when they meet a certain benchmark, we can exit them out of the program and get the next one in. So today, we welcomed Rachel Kramer to McKinley School as our literacy tutor. So glad to have her. Something upcoming this week that we look forward to every year is the annual High School Orchestra Tour. Our high school orchestra comes up to all of the elementary schools and performs about a 30-minute concert for our little students. I have to think that this is maybe one of the reasons why we have such good participation in our fourth-grade orchestra, when kids are of that age, when they can join the orchestra. So you think about if they're seeing the high school orchestra once a year, by the time they get to fourth grade and can join the orchestra, they've been a part of the kindergarten, first, second, third grade, they've been in an audience, so four times. So we thank Mr. Craig Peterson for bringing out his high school orchestra here this week on Wednesday. Just a little update on parent-teacher conferences. I don't have numbers to share with you yet for the McKinley building, but I can tell you that at Adams School, we had 146 first graders, and 138 of the 146 had somebody come for their parent-teacher conference. So eight first graders didn't have somebody attend their conference, but of the 138 out of 146, that's 94 percent. That's generally what we've seen over the years when we collect this information. In second grade, at Adams School, we have 173 second-grade students, 163 of the 173 had somebody attend their parent-teacher conference. That's also 94 percent. Wanted to thank our teachers for their good work at parent-teacher conferences of preparing, meeting with the families. It's always just good to sit down and meet the parents after about, oh, close to 30 days of school, to get to sit down and just talk with the parents about how their child is doing. And then also, you know, we appreciate that our parents for the families who don't show, you know, if you're a teacher, for example, you have 22 kids in your class, maybe you had 21 conferences of those 22, they really do their very best to try to reach out to that family or two, maybe weren't able to make it to conferences, offer them, hey, you want me to meet you after school? They can't do that, those are over the phone. So we do thank them for their efforts. And then lastly, I wanted to just let you know that last year at Adams School, we had a group of staff start something called the STEAM Team. STEAM is the acronym for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics. And we're soon getting ready to get that off the ground again this year. Our first session is going to be a four-week session. It's the meet, the kids stay after school, goes from about 3:10 to 4:30, but on November 5th, November 12th, November 19th, and November 26th. So that's four consecutive Mondays. New this year, though, is we're running this through Community Ed. Last year, the numbers were enormous, and maybe at times it felt a little bit overwhelming. And so our teachers who have kind of taken the lead with this, a couple first-grade teachers, Kim Walbot, me, and Jermaine Knick, and a couple second-grade teachers, John Damon and Sue Moore. We recently sat down with the Community Ed Director, Mary Madison, and myself, and just kind of talked through, we looked at revamping that program a little bit. So it is going to be run through Community Ed. We're going to limit it to 25 students per session. Now, when I say a session, you sign up, and if you're one of the first 25 to sign up, then that means you come on those four Mondays. And then we're going to do that same type of thing three more times over the course of the school year. So what we think we're going to do is, students who maybe didn't get in the first time will have priority to get in the second session if they sign up for the second session. There is a fee this year, there's a slight fee of $25. If you work that out per hour, it's quite reasonable, because it's almost an hour and a half a day for the four days that would be. So if you do the math, it's quite reasonable. Also, which was exciting to go along with STEAM Team, they submitted a grant to the 544 Education Foundation for some supplies and equipment to enhance the program that they offer. And that was awarded by the foundation $860. And I know that that group was recognized here at the Center of our Board of Education tonight. So we thank the 544 Education Foundation for their continued support of what we do in our school district. So with that, that's my report for this evening. Do you have any questions from the board?
Yes, what if a family can't come up with that $25 fee? Is there...
That would be like anything else run through Community Ed. So they would need to contact Community Ed and have that conversation, if the Community Ed Director may want to.
Mr. Scott, with the backpacks, that's a lot of backpacks, that's awesome. How are those, are those kids chosen by nomination, or do the parents have to ask for it?
So I will tell you how it's been done in the past, and then I will tell you what we did this year. This year, of course, we saw a tremendous jump in the number. So in the past, it was, if a teacher maybe thought they had a student or two in their classroom that could possibly benefit from a bag of food going home, we would contact United Way, they would bring that food to the school, we'd send it home with a note in that first bag of food explaining, "A food, a bag of food, come home with your child at the end of each week. If this is something that you do not have a need for, do not feel the need, don't wish to participate, let us know." And sometimes we hear from them, but if we didn't, we would just continue to send the bag of food home. So in the past, it was left up just to the classroom teacher to kind of make that call. So what we did this year is I contacted the United Way. I had heard about how another school in the county, how they operated, and what they did is they sent home a letter to every single, and I should back up, because at McKinley what we did is we focused on kindergarten, okay? So I'm talking about the 10 sections of kindergarten, the 214 students we currently have. We sent a letter home with every single kindergartner. And we explained the program, we told them what we were going to do, and in the letter it said, "If you do not want to participate, sign this and return it to us." So basically, it was an opt-out, okay? So as you can imagine, that not all people maybe checked their child's school bag, not all parents maybe look and read the information in the take-home folder. So that number of 78 was actually closer to 98 when we sent home the first bags of food, but then in that first bag of food, there was a note that said, "Hey, if there was an error, or if we made a mistake, please let us know. You know, if you don't feel the need for this, or don't want to participate, let us know." That number immediately dropped by 20 to about 78. That's kind of where we set it. So the number is much, much higher this year because of the approach that we took that mirrored where another school in the county is going.
Scott, regarding the Reading Corps training, is there any chance we could get that up here, in order there are other school districts in the area that take advantage of that, where, you know, potentially that person's got to go down there, and that might be the reason they didn't go? Is there any chance that they would have the training up in this area at one time, or is it not even...
I don't know. I mean, Minnesota REACor is, it's a big, it's a big program. They have so many tutors across the state. They offer training at different times of the school year, which then determines when their start date is. So right now, we're working on getting somebody for Adams School, but that person's start date wouldn't be until January. To answer your question, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there, maybe it's a way of not losing some potential people or something.
And I know it would be outside of probably my, I mean, it's a question that we can pose to them, and I don't know if they've tried it in the past, or if they have trainings in other parts of the state other than Minneapolis, but I kind of think that's where the centralized training is.
Was that, and that was on the employee's expense, the training was, or what wasn't?
No, it's prepped up. And, you know, this is the first time that we've had literacy tutors not attend the training. It's the first time we've run this program probably going back as far as 2013. So we have a pretty good track record, at least for the people that we've hired. The process to find these folks is, again, they're not our employees, so they first, they don't have any contact with us until they've contacted Minnesota Reading Corps. They've interviewed with Minnesota Reading Corps. If they pass that test, so to speak, then they reach out to us and say, "Hey, we found someone." And then they come to us, and Mr. Epplebold, who's our title of the lead teacher, but then he doubles with and acts as the, it's called the internal coach, with our literacy tutors. He and I sit down and interview them. Some school districts choose not to get involved in the hiring process, but I guess I'm not comfortable with that. I don't want to meet and see, you know, who's coming into our buildings. And then I can't offer any of these people a job on the spot. We just interview them, we thank them, they leave, then we contact Minnesota Reading Corps, and we say, for the most part, usually we say, "Yeah, we'd love to have that person." Because we've found that they do a nice job screening these people, basically how they feel about them, they feel about them.
Can I go back to the backpack program? So you said the 78 that are at McKinley, those are all kindergarten? What about...
No, there's about four first graders.
Four, okay.
But again, those first graders that were identified by the classroom teacher. So maybe it's closer to 74 kindergarten students.
All right, thank you.
Honestly, I don't think the United Way would be able to sustain the Food Backpack Program if we sent, if we approached every other grade level the way we approached kindergarten grade level. I don't think the program would be sustainable, you know? And I maybe think they were caught up a little bit. They were caught maybe a little bit off-guard by the number of folks that said, "Yeah, we'll participate."
I think that concludes the questions. Thanks for the report. Very good. And now we'll hear from our elementary principal, Candy Rondo, Principal at Cleveland School.
Good evening. It's Friendship Week at Cleveland this week, and today was Jersey Day, and I was kind of fired up, because this is the one day of the year I get to wear my Metta Larkman jersey. We had lots of fun today. Of course, we had lots of Minnesota Viking jerseys, and kids excited to talk about the big win yesterday. Hockey jerseys, Quinnen jerseys, you name it. The kids really enjoyed this week and all the different dress-up days that go along with that. Our theme is Friendship Week, and so each day of the week has a special theme. Today was Be a Good Sport and Wear a Jersey or Sports Gear. Tomorrow is Show That You Care, Have Wacky Hair. There are lots of ideas already floating around this afternoon about how these hairdos are going to be done tomorrow. Wednesday is Positive Friendship Choices Are No Sweat, Wear Sweats. Thursday, the theme is Hats Off to Making New Friends, and so we'll be wearing hats throughout the day. And on Friday, it's Otters Are Respectful and Responsible, and so we're promoting wearing the school colors, Maroon and Gold. And then a special little thing that is done on Friday is everybody in the building will receive a Maroon and Gold bracelet. This year, I think they're gold with Maroon lettering on them, and something, a theme about, you know, friendship, or being otters are respectful, responsible, and making good friends. So it's a really fun week. There's a big bulletin board in the hallway kind of promoting the games, and the staff are great to participate, so we do have lots of fun with this. Big thank you to our counselor, Katie Yagi. She's the one who heads us up and gets everything communicated and gets the staff and students involved, so it's a big thank you to her. And again, I want to echo what Mr. Kolbeck was saying. Fall conferences went very well. We two at Cleveland were very, very pleased with the attendance. It's great to have families come and visit both their children. I also, I haven't heard from all of the teachers, and I think I have five left to hear from, and some of them were, had rescheduled a conference or two, or had a phone conference to accommodate a family who was out of town. But of those teachers that I've heard from, I did some quick math before I came over, and it was just over 95 percent. And so, you know, excellent, excellent turnout for conferences. Teachers truly do look forward to conferencing with parents, getting to, they have a chance to get to know those new students, to kind of check in with parents and share, "This is how I'm getting to know your student, and, you know, what else can you tell me?" But also to report about the students' progress in class socially, behaviorally, academically. It's a good time to compare notes, and all that teachers have had those opportunities to get to know their students. We continue utilizing the online signup for this conference go-around, and we really want to continue to encourage parents to take advantage of this feature. It really gives them that opportunity to look at what time slots are available and select their time slot, and it's just done instantaneously. And it makes it convenient for the teachers as well. They're able to set those timeframes, adjust as need be. It's an opportunity for parents to call in too and just say, "This time won't work, but help out this." And so it's a good way to communicate and get time slots set up that will work well for everyone. Our next round of conferences takes place the end of February, which is kind of mid, midterm, third quarter. And so we'll be communicating to parents ahead of that time and encouraging them, again, to use this online signup. For those parents who choose not to or don't use that, they do have that option of filling out, kind of checking an ideal time that would work for them, and sending that back to the teacher, and then the teacher will reach out to them and communicate when that scheduled conference will take place. It's hard to believe, but the end of first quarter is only 10 school days away. That always comes up really, really fast in the fall. But at the end of this first quarter, which is Friday, November 2nd, at the elementary level, we will be sending home progress reports for all elementary students, and parents can anticipate receiving those reports on Friday, November 9th. And at the elementary level, we send them home with a student, so they don't need to check their mailbox, but they need to check their student's bookbag and look for that first progress report to arrive home right on Friday, November 9th. The last day of the quarter, which is November 2nd, we have an Envoy training coming to Fergus Falls to meet with the teachers who were trained in Envoy in August. This will be kind of a refresher course to talk through the different features and strategies of Envoy, kind of like a, just a good review of the different things that we learned in August. It'll be a great time to ask, for teachers to ask questions, help out with this, or present and discuss different scenarios that they've encountered in their classrooms, get some good feedback on what they're implementing. And then thereafter, we will have an Envoy coach come to the district and spend a couple of days in elementary classrooms, observing the teachers implementing the Envoy strategies, and then having time to kind of debrief and discuss what's really working well and what those challenges are. So it'll be great to have that coach present for those teachers on those four days. So we're looking forward to that. Just wanting to let you know, as we're getting into classrooms and doing some teacher observations and professional evaluations, you know, I continue to see Envoy strategies in the classrooms that I'm in, and teachers are trying different strategies, and it's exciting when they're, when they talk to each other and really discuss what, you know, what they're really liking about it and some of the differences that they're seeing. So thanks again for adding that tool to our toolbox. And that's what I had to share tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now a report from our secondary principal, Dean Monkey.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Just, Melanie made mention a little bit at the start of the meeting here concerning the gift that was given, the grants were given from the Education Foundation. And I'd just like to offer a little detail on that, because, just to kind of give you an idea of the scope of how many students and staff this really affects across even just the secondary school. I'm just going to list a few items and a few departments here, so you get an idea of what we're being helped with here. A new iPad was going to the choir department. We've got some advanced experiments that were being purchased for our seventh, eighth-grade middle school science students. We've got a couple more iPads that were going to the language arts department, including one that's working with the STEM English program. We had a new camera going to our yearbook class. We had some iPads and cases being going to a couple teachers in our IQ Academy, so that they would have what amounts to really a document camera that would be then projected on to their students. Fifth-grade classrooms received a number of Chromebooks and also interactive whiteboards that we want to expand on the fifth grade in relationship to their mana construction. Band department got a new instrument, an alto sax. We've got our ALC, got a number of Chromebooks, so that they could really kind of fill out one more classroom over there in relationship to having 18 different Chromebooks available for that particular class. So that'll really account now for their third lab, with, they've got a 24 cow lab in relationship to Chromebooks, plus their hardware labs, and all of a sudden, we've got basically three labs running over there. A welding program, got a new strap bender, which I have no idea what that means, but very appreciative. Our math classrooms, once again, we filled out a need here when some of our old technology all of a sudden was obsolete, and when we updated our Wi-Fi system here, then all of a sudden, they were stuck with nothing. Here was an opportunity mid-year for them to get caught up in relationship to something that they've been used to using in a math classroom. And we also got some Chromebooks going into a science classroom with the same issue, something becoming obsolete, very difficult for us mid-year to make that kind of change, and here the Education Foundation helps us out. And finally, our media center getting a high-end MacBook Pro lab that can be on a cart and used for our yearbook program, video productions, our annual program, and any other probably more high-end, since we probably only have one lab here and one lab across the street locationally, that can handle that kind of design graphics and those kind of things. So it just, it goes without saying that hundreds of students here are impacted. I sent out notices to at least 12 teachers the minute this came in. Just can't say enough about how much this helps. So special thanks to the 544 Education Foundation, it is greatly appreciated. The other principals mentioned a little bit about parent-teacher conferences. Those went very well for us here with our fifth or eighth graders. We do student-led conferencing, so there our attendance is outstanding, you know, way up in the 90 percentile kind of range. But I did find it interesting that unsolicited from me, a couple high school teachers came up to me and said, "This is the best attendance that I've seen within three years." So not sure why, or maybe timing of the year, or whatever, but I thought it was interesting that two people came up. We do student-led conferencing, so there our attendance is outstanding, you know, way up in the ninety percentile kind of range. But I, I did find it interesting that unsolicited from me, a couple high school teachers came up to me and said, this is the best attendance that I've seen within three years. So not sure why, or maybe timing of the year or whatever, but I thought it was interesting that two people came up. I can't say that went across the whole high school, but at least they were, they were pleased. And special thanks to Mr. Tilke for doing some work in relationship to sending out postcards, offering some special invitations to some parents and students to come in at the high school level as well. So we're pleased with our conferences here. And then just some upcoming events that you can kind of put on your calendar and a chance to kind of tell the public about. Mentioned a little bit about the Staff Development Afternoon that we have on November second, that will be in early out for us. So students will be out three hours early on that date, so we can have some extra staff development time and some work time at the end of the, our first quarter. And we also have High School Musical that is going to come up here within just about three weeks. It's going to open on Friday, November ninth, and this year they are doing the Wizard Box. So it should be a very popular production out there for all ages. And that's going to be over the course of two weekends, starting on that Friday, November ninth at seven o'clock. And then it will go Friday, Saturday, that first weekend, then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the second weekend there in the middle of November. And finally, we'd just like to invite everybody, all community members, if you can possibly make it to our Veterans Day program. This year, we're going to hold that on Friday, November ninth at ten in the morning. Veterans Day falls officially on a Sunday this year, so we're looking to target that November ninth. And we've already got great cooperation from the community, DFW, American Legion. I just talked to Missy tonight about working with the historical side of the two. So we get great help throughout all of that, and we're really looking forward to having a good program for everybody at ten o'clock on that Friday. So that's what I have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing with the agenda, we'll consider for approval several things under the consent agenda, one being the minutes from our regular school board meeting held October eighth, and then some additional personnel maneuvers. So Elaine, will you cover those?
Yes, Leslie Knutson will be hired, request to be hired as a secretary at KSS, Kennedy Secondary School in the district office, and Josh, Joshua Trotner, district mechanic coworker, which is under the custodian contract, beginning work on November first, two thousand eighteen. I also have para educator positions posted on our website along with special ed para position posted, so I just encourage the public to check out those postings and please apply if interested.
All right. And that's the conclusion of the general consent item, is there a motion approved?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the general consent item, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, and we'll move on to new business where we would look for a motion that is in the form of a motion but treated like a, not treated like a resolution, correct?
Yep, that's a resolution in that sense, yes.
But says, be it hereby resolved that the Board of Fergus Falls Public Schools nominates Matthew Lemke to serve on the Board of Directors as a nominee for Lakes Country Service Cooperative, and then, and that we authorize his name to be placed on the ballot to be submitted to Lakes Country Service Cooperative voting members. So that's the motion. Is someone willing to make that motion?
Uh-huh.
And a second?
All second.
Any discussion on that?
What does that mean when it says Matt's term of the city in this year?
I was filling a role for the city, so now this is for school board.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, very good.
We have to have roll calls.
They're all called.
Okay.
So does that need to be submitted as a resolution versus just?
Motion.
A motion?
It should be a resolution, yeah.
Okay, so I'll move for the resolution.
There, thank you.
Thank you. And so we have the resolution and a second to that.
All second.
Same, Madeline. All right, very well. And so with that, clerk, will you take roll?
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Lane Daniels, yes. Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Steve Vigasaw?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Is yours?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion to request an additional three and a half hours per day for a special education para professional position? Would someone be willing to make that motion?
Soon.
And a second?
A second.
All right, any questions on that? All in favor of approving that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. We are looking for a request for support staff change, so the Kennedy Secondary School has grab and go, grab and go breakfast and, and a computer lunch para educator position at four point seven five hours a day, and then we'd like to change it to grab and go lunch, computer, food prep cafeteria position, so that would add one point two five hours per day and make it a grade four position. So that is what we want to modify. Is there a motion to do that?
And then just a little bit additional. And with that position change, we would transfer Brittany Monday to that position.
Okay, so you want us to take the personnel action with it, along with a?
Kind of a whole package deal if possible.
All right.
If you prefer to split it, you should look into.
No, I'm good with the whole package deal. So is that clear? Then, then I'm still within that motion, also looking to identify the staff person, Brittany Monday, to, to have that position.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, I'll take Steve. And any discussion? Is it pretty clear what we're doing? Okay. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's approved. And then, next motion, looking for revisions to the school board policies for instructional curriculum, policy six oh four, school district testing plan and procedure, policy six fourteen, and disposition of obsolete equipment and material, policy eight oh two. Some need for adjustment on those policies. Is there a motion to do so?
Soon.
And a second?
All second.
And does either one of you on the policy committee want to just address briefly what the?
Yeah, there were just some general recommendations that were made.
Basically the ESSA, wasn't it?
It was just very general.
It was all language, it wasn't really any policy changes, it's just more updating language to more modern language, I guess.
All right. Unless some of them were less, switched to more and less specific so they can be more universally used.
All right.
Maybe get a little child that's behind language, replace it with the ESSA language. Maybe super boring, but it's easy to do it, so, nothing groundbreaking here.
And the next one is just a first reading.
All right, so any other discussions, questions on those revisions to those three policies? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's approved. And then we have first reading, no activity required from the board, but just a notice that there's first reading of three new school board policies, number six fifteen, which is testing accommodations modifications and exemptions for IEPs and five oh four plans and LEP students. Policy six eighteen, assessment of student achievement, and policy six nineteen, staff development for standards. So like I reported, no, no need to take action, but notice for the board to continue to review it and for the public to look online at those policies if they are of interest and give feedback to your board members, so.
And then they'll be up for approval on the November nineteenth meeting.
All right, very good. Last agenda item is a resolution of the school board supporting a Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, and whereas District 544 School Board recognized the value of students participating in extracurricular activities, and whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school district in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fergus Falls School Board supports the district's application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Would someone offer the resolution and move for its adoption?
I'd offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
And is there a second?
All second.
All right, and does anyone have comments or questions in regard to the resolution?
Do we know when this would, we would find out about this grant?
I do not know.
No, Mary Madison and Derek works with this, and I don't know, there's no timeframe even on the application itself, but it should be shortly. I know it just came out, so it should be shortly. And they usually provide a, Mark, Mark, excuse me, my understanding is usually a couple thousand dollars, something like that is what it provides.
Do I agree?
And so it would be, the, the funds would be accessible this year and not the next school year. Mark, would know that?
It would go into, we have, we keep a separate fund for it, and then as students apply for it and stuff, then we ask for reimbursement. So yes, it could be this year, depends on when the high school.
So we never get a chunk of money, and then if we don't use it, we just keep it, it's?
It's a reimbursement.
Yeah, very well. Okay.
And this is for students to apply for scholarships for the activity fees if they qualify, right?
Correct.
All right. Very good. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you direct the roll call, please?
Matt Lemke, yes. You and Vigasaw?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Is yours?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Lane Daniels, yes. Resolution passes.
All right, very good. That concludes our agenda for this evening. For the first time in about forty-five million years, we do not have a work session tonight. And so with that, I will entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
All right, second?
A second.
Okay, everybody second.
Everybody second.
See what happens when you give her the super gen?
Yeah. All right. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Everybody is aware of the laws of us.